Good morning. My name is Larry Carbonneau. I'm representing the state of Maine today, the Division of Health and Human Services. I work for the Division of Licensing and Regulatory Services. And I'll tell you a little bit about what we do at our, at the division level. We regulate state hospitals with St. Andrews and Miles were in Lincoln County. Healthcare represents one of those entities at this point. And we also, okay, well, thank you. I was working on that part. So, the group I work with, we regulate state hospitals and the nursing homes in the state of Maine, any long-term care living facilities. So if you see a facility that says assisted living, that sort of thing, anytime you have complaints or concerns, they get directed toward our office. We have one location in Augusta, and we basically have 84 people that travel throughout the state, regulating the 14 hospitals, 107 nursing homes, and about 660 assisted living facilities. So we're really glad to be here today. The reason why we're here today is because of a certificate of need application from Lincoln Health County, Lincoln County Healthcare, sorry. And basically, the proposal, they'll talk a little bit more about it, is to consolidate operations of the acute care part of their hospital in Damascata. And I'll leave them to talk about that some more. What I want to tell you about before we get to some operational issues of how we're going to be running this hearing today, is that for an application to be approved, there are certain criteria that has to be met by the applicant. Those include demonstrating that the applicant is fit, willing, able to provide the services that they're applying to do. Secondly, that they have the economic feasibility to provide those services in ongoing manner. Third is that there is a community need for those services. Fourth is that it basically is, that it makes economic and ordinary sense for how they propose to provide those services. Then in addition, it's, there's a requirement to discuss, you know, whether this is a service that would be duplicated, how it affects other hospitals in this case. So those are the limited scope that go on there. As part of this, we sometimes have public hearings, and the commissioner decided to have a public hearing. And obviously, since all of you are out here, a lot of you in the community wanted to come and speak. So, a couple of weeks ago, there was a newspaper article in the newspaper announcing a public hearing. It was originally scheduled for Augusta, and it was changed to here today. So the comment period basically began when we ran that article in the newspaper. And the state will be taking comments between now and all the way through the 22nd of January. So, we're going to give everybody a few minutes today to be able to speak. And back at the desk back there, we have some forms if you'd like to fill out and leave comments with us, or we've got our address on there, so you can send in as many comments as you want, and they will all be reviewed and compiled as part of the record for this event today. The other thing that we're handing out back there is an agenda. And basically, the only part of the agenda that's set in stone is it starts at 10 o'clock, and it'll end when everyone gets a chance to speak, or 4:30, whichever comes first. And we'll compress the times as needed to effectuate the ability of everyone to be able to speak. Because I have no plans to speak till 10:30, which I'm sure you're all glad about already, because it's much more important to hear from everybody. The fact that I'm by myself up at the table doesn't really mean anything, because we're getting this recorded, and we'll be taking everybody's comments with equal review and participation. So I thank you, everybody, for coming out. If you want to speak today, we need you to sign up with the recorders in the back of the office there. We have three sheets. One's for if you'd like to speak for the project, one if you'd like to speak against the project, and the third one's my favorite category, if you're neither for nor against the project. I just think usually people have opinions. So, anyway, that's the way that goes. And we will try to call people as reasonably as possible. Sometimes we'll call people out of order. We're not doing anything to anybody. We're just jumping from list to list to try to be fair in terms of the overall presentation. When you do speak, what we'd like you to do is spell out your name, so that we've got it correctly in the recording. And at this point, what we're going to do is move on to the next section, where Lincoln County Healthcare does their presentation. And I believe Mr. Jeff Curtis will be starting for them.
Is it okay if we sit?
Yeah.
My name is Jeff Curtis. I'm chairman of the Board of Trustees of Lincoln County Healthcare and Lincoln Health. I live here in Booth Bay Harbor. I own Sherman's Bookstores, which has its headquarters here in Booth Bay Harbor. I just wanted to start the day with giving an overview of where we are and where we've come from, from the Board of Trustees' point of view, in our efforts to develop a quality and affordable healthcare system here in Lincoln County. I joined the Board of St. Andrews Hospital back in 1997, and I've been on the Board of St. Andrews ever since, with the exception of one year. During that entire time, we've struggled with trying to provide the best quality services at the most affordable price in a community, and that's not just Booth Bay Harbor, but an entire Lincoln County, a community where really the volume is very low. The number of people using the services has been, has made it a challenge to provide both, not quality, but affordable services. So, we've had that struggle. I've got to tell you, though, in the beginning of my service in the mid-'90s, the struggle was a lot worse, because we had a culture and an environment of all-out competition between St. Andrews and particularly Miles Hospital in Damascata. We would advertise in the Damascata papers, trying to get their residents to come down here for their healthcare services. And I'm sure you all remember the many ads that Miles would put in our newspaper, trying to get us to go up there for our healthcare services. That was all an environment where neither hospital had enough patience to really provide the quality services and the range of services at an affordable price that we really wanted to, and that the community deserved. We were, in effect, splitting the market and both suffering. So fortunately, we moved from that view of all-out competition to one of cooperation. And it was a very slow process through the latter half of the '90s and the beginning of the 2000s. But, for example, when we lost our chief financial officer at St. Andrews, that's an expensive position. We realized we could probably do with a CFO that worked part-time for us, but CFOs don't tend to want to do that. We shared, we entered into a contract with Miles, combined our finance departments, and shared a CFO. Another example, there was a time when both Miles and St. Andrews needed an additional surgeon, but neither hospital could support a full-time surgeon, there just wasn't enough, enough patients. So we entered into a contract and hired a surgeon to come to Lincoln County, who spent half his time at Miles, half his time at St. Andrews. Those kinds of cooperative ventures proved very successful in continuing to bring services to Lincoln County that we might not otherwise, acting alone, be able to support. By the mid-2000s, we realized that we wanted to cooperate even more, on more ventures. At that time, both hospitals were owned by Maine Health. We could have cooperated at that level, but we wanted local control, more local control over the cooperation efforts. And so, we received permission to create Lincoln County Healthcare, which is an intermediary parent. That was in, I think that took place in 2007. Lincoln County Maine Health transferred its interests as sole owner of St. Andrews and Miles to Lincoln County Healthcare, and in turn became, Maine Health became the sole owner of Lincoln County Healthcare. So that was the first transaction that the department is looking at. There was no capital expenditure or money changing hands in that, because Maine Health was the sole owner at the beginning of both hospitals, and at the end, it was the sole owner of Lincoln County Healthcare, which was the sole owner of both hospitals. Because of that local control over Lincoln County Healthcare, the Board of Trustees in the beginning was made up of 10 people from the St. Andrews Board of Trustees, 10 people from the Miles Board of Trustees. We were able to, over the next few years, consolidate services in a way that made sense, that made them more affordable, that increased the quality and accessibility of them. For example, we moved the acute care inpatient services, including surgery, from the St. Andrews campus to the Miles campus, where it could be, where there were enough people utilizing it for it to make sense. At the same time, we moved skilled care inpatient services from the Miles campus to the St. Andrews campus. And that allowed for quality service here in town. At one point in, I guess it was 2011, the board was advised that the volume overnight at the emergency room here in town was so low that it was no longer really appropriate, some of us would say safe, to continue to hold ourselves out as an emergency room in the middle of the night. There were just weren't enough people using it to provide for continuation of quality service. It could be overrun very easily with more than one emergency at a time. So, the board had to make a very difficult decision, and we did, to convert the 24/7 ER to an urgent care center. When we did that, we realized that St. Andrews could not continue as a hospital if it didn't have a 24/7 ER. What we decided to do in that situation was to have Miles transfer all of its assets to St. Andrews, including its 24/7 emergency room. Miles then gave up its hospital license and ceased to exist as a corporation. St. Andrews then, on October 1st, changed its name to Lincoln Health. So that's where we are now. As a result of that, that merger, if you will, we have been able to significantly reduce the costs of a lot of our services. And we anticipate another round of cost reductions in 2014. We have, for all the 16 years I've been involved, we have shared, Miles and St. Andrews have gone back and forth, sharing the dubious distinction of being either the most expensive hospital in the state, or the second most expensive hospital in the state. We think, and the board is confident, that as a result of these price reductions, we're not going to be able to claim that distinction anymore. We certainly hope so. For many years, all of you know that the outstanding reputation St. Andrews Hospital and St. Andrews Village has had for compassionate care. I think that's the best way to describe our strength. That is why we put the skilled nursing facility down here. That's where compassionate care really, really shined. But one shortcoming of the merger that the board recognizes is that before the merger, we had approximately 20 licensed skilled beds at St. Andrews. And after the merger, now we only have six licensed skilled beds, and those are at the Village. The Board of Trustees knows that that's a shortcoming, and has determined to increase the number of skilled beds in the area. We have filed a letter of intent to seek a certificate of need with the department. And I guess I'll end by saying that I hope when the department looks upon that certificate of need request, they will look upon it favorably. Thank you.
My name is Bill Logan. I live in Booth Bay Harbor. I don't have much to add to what Jeff has already said, because he's effectively given the perspective as a member of the Board of Trustees. I joined the Board in 2010, just started the, just at the start of a new strategic plan. And we were charged with the, trying to most effectively convey the goals of the Triple Aim, which are to improve the patient experience of care, improving the health of populations, and reducing the per capita cost of healthcare. And to do that, we concentrated on access and affordability, customer service, and excellent quality of care. That was our charge. Shortly thereafter, we were advised by both the medical leadership and nursing leadership, as well as consultants, that continuing an emergency room, a full-time emergency room department in St. Andrews was not the best way to effectively use the human assets, the physical assets, and the financial assets to benefit the people of Booth Bay region. And for a lot of different reasons. It's a very wrenching decision. My family's been involved with St. Andrews since its inception, in, since it becoming a nonprofit corporation in 1955. St. Andrews was always a part of our life. So for, I'm the third generation involved in it. It's not an easy decision to see something like that happen, to see services taken away, or decide that the services should be, should be elsewhere. But nevertheless, based on the data that we had, it was really the only decision, and certainly the most responsible decision, because you're, as a trustee, you're not only responsible for the continuation of the organization for the next generation and succeeding generations after that. You're responsible also, in many ways, for the, for either the patients that use the facility, and maybe even the broader, well, in fact, now, with the Affordable Healthcare Act being instituted, we're feeling the pressure to be involved with not just the patients, but the whole population of the organization which you serve, which one serves. So that, the emphasis has changed a little bit. But nevertheless, these are hard decisions. They're not taken lightly and thoroughly investigated. But we believe that consolidating some services that are underutilized, and that are very expensive, in order to provide services that we believe that will be utilized at a higher level, and are a more effective use of the financial assets that St. Andrews and Miles, and ultimately, as merged, Lincoln Health has, plus the physical assets that we intend to maintain well into the future and to hand on to succeeding generations, and also the human assets, the staff that work at the facilities. We believe that that's the most effective use of those assets. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Jim Donovan, D-O-N-O-V-A-N. I am the president and CEO of Lincoln County Healthcare. Jeff Curtis talked about the history a bit. And the history of Miles and St. Andrews are that of two small rural independent hospitals that were founded in the early 20th century. And over the years, through an evolutionary processes, evolutionary process, their leaders developed a mix of programs and services that they felt were in the best interests and met the needs of the communities. They functioned this manner for decades. And the first opportunity for, the first discussions that occurred around bringing Miles and St. Andrews organizations together in some way occurred in the late 1980s. Those discussions, while they did not come to fruition, they did signal a recognition by the then-members of the Board of Trustees, that the changing healthcare environment was going to demand new governance and care delivery models. Things were changing quickly in the state of Maine in the '90s. Healthcare systems were starting to develop. These systems became what we now know as Eastern Maine Health System, Central Maine Healthcare, Maine General Healthcare, and Maine Health. During this period, the trustees of Miles and St. Andrews were very proactive in recognizing that change was needed, and that their relationships and partnerships needed to be strengthened, and thus became the first two community hospitals to join the Maine Health system. St. Andrews in 1996, Miles in 1997. While individual members of the system, for a decade or so, there were a number of discussions, again, about how these two organizations could work together to develop a healthcare system for all the residents of Lincoln County. Over time, those discussions evolved, and in 2006, I'm sorry, a joint planning process was started. And about a year later, in November 2007, Lincoln County Healthcare was created, bringing the two organizations together in an integrated fashion, under a single Board of Trustees, that immediately set out to integrate programs and services across the county. The early goals and successes centered on building a single medical staff to oversee quality, a single management staff to ensure the coordination of clinical and non-clinical programs and activities. And expectations were set by the board for cost savings and gaining efficiencies due to the elimination of unnecessary duplication and operational efficiencies. By the end of 2009, those savings totaled over $3 million a year annually. An early goal of the Board of Trustees was to conduct a strategic planning process. After a very thorough and inclusive process, which included community, open community meetings in both Booth Bay Harbor and Damascata, the board approved a three-year plan in March of 2009. The focus of that plan, the clinical focus of that plan, was on outpatient and ambulatory services and the senior living continuum. Since that time, these services have remained our priority in all that we do, and we continue to monitor the feasibility of expanding these services and facilities to meet the changing needs of the communities. Given the demographics of our communities, this certainly includes looking at expansion in the future of our nursing homes. The initial planning produced a mission statement, and I want to talk to you just a bit about the mission statement of Lincoln County Healthcare. It is "to ensure access to high-quality, patient-centered, and affordable care." Let me break it down a bit. Ensure access. We're not large enough to do everything for everybody. I don't think there's a healthcare system in the country that's actually large enough to do everything for everybody. But our providers have the responsibility of getting their patients the care they need, wherever that care may be provided, whether it's locally in Lincoln County, maybe in Brunswick, Portland, Boston, or beyond. This speaks to the importance of our primary care network. High quality. Again, while we cannot offer every service to every patient, we, what we do is performed by expertly trained professionals and is of the highest quality. Our performance against the quality measures of organizations such as Medicare, Anthem, and Harvard Pilgrim, and national recognition from organizations such as Leapfrog speak for themselves. Patient-centered. Throughout our long history, our patients, residents, and their families have noted the extraordinary levels of not just the care, but the caring that they have received from our staff. Putting those for whom we are responsible in the center of all that we do is our hallmark, and it will always be so. Affordable care. Here is where we have struggled. You just heard from Jeff that Miles and St. Andrews have historically been the two most expensive hospitals in the state of Maine. We've worked very hard to change that, and we've made progress. However, we need to do more. Progress has been made prior to the merger of the two hospitals to create Lincoln Health, and that was a most significant step in the right direction. But making our services affordable to the commercially and self-insured populations will always be a battle for us, but a battle we will take. The strategic plan and mission statement that guided the development of Lincoln County Healthcare led to a second planning process culminating in April of 2012, and subsequently made a series of very important decisions. The board, as Jeff described, determined that there was a need to convert St. Andrews, ultimately to merge the two hospitals together. A lengthy process ensued. We went through a variety of organizational change, a spectrum, I guess, of organizational change, and made the decision we did to create a single licensed hospital for the state, I'm sorry, for the county, not for the state. And we also worked very hard to ensure that we would be able to maintain critical access hospital and the Medicare funding that comes with it for that hospital, and we were able to do that. The price reductions have been mentioned. We expect that we will be able to reduce prices again, and this will be a focus for every budget process we have going forward. We have to become increasingly affordable for the patients that we serve. And to conclude, LCH was formed in 2007 to integrate services across the county and rationalize how those services are delivered. It is focused on the mission pillars of access, quality, the patient, and affordability, and has enjoyed considerable success. The merger of Miles and St. Andrews to create Lincoln Health is a product of the evolution of Lincoln County Healthcare as an integrated delivery system for Lincoln County. Over the past six years, the combined effort of the board, the physician leaders, and management to better plan for, manage, and deliver care that meets the needs of our communities has had a synergistic effect that will continue to pay dividends into the future. Thank you.
My name is Mark Foorey, F-O-U-R-R-E. I'm an emergency physician and the chief medical officer of Lincoln County Healthcare. Healthcare is changing, and that's great news across the country and for our local communities. In the past, our healthcare system was focused on taking care of sick patients, and that largely was related to care within hospitals. But as we looked across the country, and actually across the world, at healthcare systems that are very effective at keeping people healthy, are very effective at keeping people healthy, what we realized is that we need to be providing care in the doctor's offices, in your primary care physician's office, sometimes called a patient-centered medical home. In addition to that, we've seen that the care of those patients who are sick has been, has become increasingly complex and technical, requiring significant investment in tools and specialists to be able to provide the best care to those patients. And that has caused a dramatic shift in the way healthcare is provided. There's a dramatic shift from the hospital to the outpatient setting, to doctor's offices. And there's also a dramatic shift from rural hospitals to larger hospitals and urban centers, tertiary care hospitals. And that's a national trend. It's not just occurring here locally. Many of us may think that this is a relatively recent phenomenon and in part related to the Accountable Care Act. And while those things have caused this to move much more quickly over the past few years, in reality, this change in the way we deliver healthcare began many years ago. In the mid-1990s, before St. Andrews Hospital joined Maine Health, the St. Andrews Hospital Board of Trustees made some very difficult decisions. They recognized that they were no longer able to provide deliveries in a safe and effective manner, and they decided to stop providing obstetrical care here at St. Andrews. It was a very difficult decision by the Board. It was very difficult for the community, but it was the right thing to do for patients. In the same fashion, they recognized that they were no longer able to provide emergency surgery. They just simply could not support to have surgeons, anesthesiologists, nurses available around the clock to do emergency care. And they, as an independent board, made the decision, "We're no longer going to provide emergency surgery at St. Andrews Hospital." Another difficult decision. Shortly after Lincoln County Healthcare was formed, I was asked to be the director of the Emergency Department at St. Andrews. And I found good care that was given there by highly dedicated individuals, although there was opportunities for improvement that were noted. And one of the things that happened was Lincoln County Healthcare invested heavily in the Emergency Department. They committed significant amounts of money to bring in board-certified emergency physicians who had special training to provide emergency care. And with that, we were able to demonstrate improved care for patients that came to the Emergency Department. Despite that investment of money and individuals, the number of patients that came to the Emergency Department at St. Andrews decreased by 20% over seven years. That left down to 10 patients per day. 80% of those patients, so eight of those patients each day, did not necessarily need to be in an emergency department. Another thing that happened was that the emergency physicians there were becoming increasingly concerned about the level of care that they could deliver. They'd been trained in emergency medicine. They worked in other emergency departments throughout the state. And they recognized that the care that they could deliver was very limited by the number of resources that they could provide. St. Andrews had great providers. We gave good care, but it was limited by the fact that you only had one nurse and one emergency physician there. And that's different if you're very, very sick, if you're critically ill or injured. That's different than the care that you need to have, which involves several physicians, specialists, several nurses, and increased technology that St. Andrews had a difficult time providing in the Emergency Department. And it was those specialized emergency physicians who believed we could develop a safer model for delivering care to patients in the Booth Bay Peninsula that truly needed emergency care. And that care involved improvement and enhancement of the emergency medical services. As a part of that, the Booth Bay Regional Ambulance Service greatly improved their personnel over the past few years, more experienced, better paramedics. In addition, we've added telemedicine. There's an iPad, so that the moment that a patient enters into the ambulance, they are then in the healthcare system. They can begin conversations with the doctor, and the paramedics are trained to provide life-saving treatment at that very time, as soon as the paramedic arrives, which is extremely important and is going very well. That allows the patient to be in a setting where you can bring more doctors, more nurses, and more people to provide that care. In addition to providing what we believe is better emergency care, these changes also have offered several additional enhancements to care here on the community. There now is an urgent care center, not just for the Booth Bay Peninsula, but for all of Lincoln County. And that's important because it's cost 30% less than the Emergency Department, and cost is really an important factor. And remember that 80% of those patients can be handled and managed in the urgent care center, just as they were before this change. In addition, we've made commitments and invested resources, both in the hospital building and campus, by enhancing wellness services such as physical therapy and occupational therapy, and in the physician's offices by adding nurses who can provide care management and pharmacists who can manage medications and help patients make certain that they're taking the medications that they need. We're also making efforts and had significant success at allowing patients to be seen that day if they need to, if they call the office at the family care center. Across the country, we're moving from sick care to healthcare. The changes here in the peninsula and across Lincoln County Healthcare are allowing us to provide better care for patients, to keep them healthy instead of just reacting to sickness. And I believe that this change that we are reviewing in Certificate of Need will provide better care and happier patients in the end. Thank you.
Due to the limited seating in the room, is it possible that after someone speaks and they leave, so that people come in and sit?
Yeah, I believe Mr. McGinty here is the last person from Lincoln County. We're going to take a break and reorganize and explain some more of those. Okay? So, Mr. McGinty.
Thank you, Mr. Carbono. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Frank McGinty. I'm Maine Health's Executive Vice President and Treasurer.
My name is Frank McGinty. I'm Maine Health's Executive Vice President and Treasurer. And I'm here today to express Maine Health's unequivocal support for the work that's being done by the Lincoln County Healthcare Board of Trustees and management team. We are convinced that the formation of Lincoln County Healthcare six years ago and the corporate restructuring, that's the primary subject of this proceeding. The merger of Miles Memorial Hospital into St. Andrews and the creation of a single hospital, Lincoln Health, that will serve all the residents of Lincoln County from campuses in Booth Bay and Damascata are the two most important steps that have been taken to date to assure the continuation of hospital and medical services here in Lincoln County. And we're absolutely certain that as the Department of Human Services completes its review of the actions that have been taken, they will find those actions in every respect to be consistent with the general purposes and the specific requirements of the Certificate of Need Act. Mr. Curtis, in his remarks, mentioned the collaborative effort that began when St. Andrews and Miles became part of the Maine Health System more than a decade ago. It's true that a lot of progress was made. Both hospitals' facilities were updated and expanded. New clinical programs were developed. The hospitals began working together to try to reduce their administrative expenses. But by 2006, it was very clear to everybody involved that the outcome, our ability to create two healthcare systems in Lincoln County that would together meet the needs of most of its residents, was very much in doubt. Miles, St. Andrews, both were regularly reporting substantial operating losses that depleted their cash resources, made it very difficult for them to invest in new, better services and programs. As several people have already said, the hospital's prices were among the highest in the state of Maine. Frankly, they were among the highest in the nation. So raising prices to deal with those financial problems simply wasn't an option. In fact, at the time, several major insurance companies were seeking to remove St. Andrews from their network, given its limited scope of services and the high prices that it charged for them. Maine Health was able to prevent that from happening. But what we could not prevent was the regular movement of patients from the Booth Bay region to other hospitals outside Lincoln County for care of comparable quality at a much lower price. And so by 2007, the year before Lincoln County Healthcare was formed, the average number of acute care patients at St. Andrews Hospital had fallen to just two and a half patients a day, far too few to maintain a really strong clinical program capable of providing people care at the quality they have every reason to expect. So under those circumstances, it really wasn't a surprise that Maine Health quickly endorsed the recommendations that came from the St. Andrews and Miles Boards to form Lincoln County Healthcare. Nor was it a surprise that Governor Boddachi at the time, or the officials of the Department of Health and Human Services with whom we were working, strongly encouraged and applauded the combination of the two to create Lincoln County Healthcare. More importantly, both for this proceeding and for all of you, Lincoln County Healthcare has done just what the trustees of St. Andrews and Miles had in mind. If you look at the clinical program in place here today, it's much stronger than it possibly could have been had Lincoln County Healthcare not been created. As a couple of people I mentioned, Miles Memorial Hospital was just recognized by the Leapfrog Group, a very prestigious national organization, as one of the top rural hospitals in America. It's the second time in four years that Miles has received that recognition. Today, there are 45 outstanding physicians, primary care and specialists, providing care to the patients in Lincoln County from campuses in Booth Bay, Damascata, Wiscasset, and Waldenboro. And the array of long-term care services that exist today in Lincoln County, Lincoln County Healthcare skilled nursing facilities, its assisted living and senior living facilities, its home care and hospice services, frankly, are a model for other places in the state of Maine. What you have today simply would not have been created, would not have been sustained, but for what's been accomplished through the work of Lincoln County Healthcare over the last six years. And certainly, the evidence that Lincoln County Healthcare has made healthcare in this county much more affordable is indisputably clear. This year, for the third consecutive year, Lincoln County Healthcare will spend less than it did the previous year. Prices have been significantly reduced, in some cases by 26% or 40%, as Lincoln Health was established on October 1st. The cost of providing care to patients with private health insurance in Lincoln County is now less than the state average. Not all that long ago, it was 10% or 15% higher than the state average, creating serious problems for employers in these communities. So again, a tremendous amount has been accomplished. We know that there are issues that are of concern to the people of Lincoln County. Jeff, Bill, Jim, Mark have all mentioned our commitment to continue to work with these communities to address them. And again, I'm sure that as you think about what has been done here and what it makes possible in the future, you'll conclude that we're on the right path, and with your help, we'll develop the kind of healthcare system for Lincoln County that you need and want. So, thank you, Mr. Carbono.
As I said, we're going to take a couple minutes break to reorganize a little bit, and we'll continue on in about three minutes. Thank you. Just to let everybody know, there's a whole row of chairs up front. If somebody would like to have a seat there. Okay, we're back on the record now. Just wanted to point out to everybody that we are developing a record, and we will get a transcript of the hearing today. And once the transcript is available, you can use the same address and phone number to request a copy of the transcript from our office. It'll definitely be available before the 22nd of January, while the comment period's still open. So if anybody would like a copy, as it said in the notice for the public hearing, that people can schedule time to come up to Augusta and actually take a look at the record anytime they want to, that's available to you also. I probably will go through, in a more formal way, the instructions at the end, because obviously, we're getting recorded, and I believe will show up on somebody's television near you at some point in time. So that's available. And there was a request for everybody, if they'd like to be considerate to others, after you've spoken and you've heard a few people, if you could make way for some other people. Depending on how busy we are, we added about 15 chairs, and we still have six or seven up front here. Appreciate everybody squeezing in, and it's a good use of community space, anyway, today. Along that way, we're going to begin testimony. And I think I made a mistake at the beginning. I put some people's names on the wrong piece of paper. So I'm not too sure we're going to begin with those two people and eliminate the confusion and then move on to a regular process. So with that, Representative Fossil?
Do I have to sit down?
You can stand.
Or lean? Lean.
I'm Les Fossil. You spell that like the dinosaurs. And now you know what I do for a living, restore old houses. I pay the full cost of health insurance for all my employees and families, and it is extraordinarily difficult to do that in Maine and particularly in Lincoln County. So I appreciate very much the lowering of healthcare costs. But that's not what I'm here in. My side job has been in the legislature, and I served in the legislature for two terms. I served, it was my idea to have a joint select committee on healthcare reform before Obama got that idea. And then we tried for a joint select committee on healthcare costs. That failed. But I was on Health and Human Services, and the bill to do what we're here for today, and I've got my notes here, and my eyes no longer work, so we'll put my glasses on. The bill to, on the most recent version of the Certificate of Need, was my bill. It started out as John McCain's bill, and it became my bill because I was on the committee and I took the hits. So this bill, we worked for one session in the legislature. We took it over the summer, and we had meeting after meeting after meeting. Everybody was there. And then we got into the second session, and we went at it again. And some of the people in the room, I recognize from that. You know, we have similar scars. By the time we were done, the majority report and the minority report only had two, one difference. And it was a difference between a three and a five. And that's where the Certificate of Need came in at $3 million or $5 million. And the $5 million one, my bill, passed. But there was no discussion at all that what we were doing would affect what is happening here. And so I was very, very surprised. And I think it's clever lawyering to find something there, but it was not the intent of the people there in that committee, the legislators, to get involved in this process. And indeed, I am not an admirer of the process we went through. I think it hurt everybody. My strong suspicion is that we've got about 38 hospitals in this state now. I think we're going to lose 10 in the next 10 years. And I hope they learn from our experience and do it better, because we hurt a lot of people in this process, and that's got to stop. Couple other things. We have two very diverse communities here that we have to recognize. One is a number of fairly prosperous people who have retired here because there was good healthcare, local hospital, and that's the reason we did it. We need to address their needs. And if you come to the St. Andrews Community Committee meeting tomorrow morning, we'll get into more of that. We'll have more than 30 seconds to do that. The second group that's not recognized is there's an enormous number of people who do not use our facilities, who don't have healthcare because they can't afford it. And we have to recognize those people, too. They're the ones who put duct tape on their wounds. And that's got to stop, guys. It's really got to stop. We've got to cut the cost of healthcare, and we have to increase the availability, and we have to make the critical or the urgent care facility at St. Andrews do that for us. And we've got to do it together. Got to stop fighting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Alice Grant?
Good morning. My name is Alice Grant, and I live in Booth Bay. I'd like to speak about my recovery from knee replacement surgery. The surgery was done, oh, okay, at Maine Med Center, and then I was transferred to St. Andrews Hospital for rehabilitation. That was my choice. That's what I wanted. My rehabilitation was absolutely fantastic because of the help of all the people at St. Andrews. I had a much better recovery because of my family, and in particular, my sister Mary. I had a much better recovery because of my family, and in particular, my sister Mary was very involved and very supportive. It was because of the care at St. Andrews and my family's support that I was able to be on a plane six weeks after my surgery to go out to Arizona to attend my nephew's graduation. I have one thing to say, please help us heal at home. We need beds.
Denise Griffin?
My name is Denise Griffin, G-R-I-F-F-I-N, and I'm a certified Senior Human Resource Professional. I am also a Booth Bay Harbor resident, a selectman, a member of Mobilized Midcoast Maine Leadership Team, which is an economic development group here in Lincoln County, a health plan administrator for the First Bancorp, and a patient at St. Andrews and the Family Care Center. Like other people under age 65, I contribute a fair amount to the cost of private health insurance offered through my employer. So I'm here today to bring you the perspective of the population under age 65, which despite what people think, represents well over 2/3 of the Booth Bay region's population, according to the 2010 U.S. Census. Healthcare has changed dramatically since I came to Booth Bay Harbor in the mid-'70s. No longer do we have independent physicians and surgeons like my father-in-law, who was happy to be on call for the ER and make house calls 24/7. No longer do we have reasonably priced health insurance premiums which businesses can afford. Times have changed. Healthcare costs, information, and technology have led to a huge shift in the expectations of the under-age 65 population. First, health insurance rates are based on actual claims experience. St. Andrews billing fees have been close to, if not the highest, in the state. Local employers have seen the cost of family health insurance double in the past 10 years, both the town and the bank paying outstanding amount, over $19,000 annually per employee. Premium increases far outpace wage increases. If we maintain our old practice, the cost of health insurance will exceed wages by 2033. This is clearly unsustainable. Employees, business executives, school superintendents, and town managers know this. Taxes will skyrocket. Second, easily accessible information has led to higher standards in healthcare and in employee expectations. In order to manage healthcare expenses, most local employers such as banks, Hodgston Yachts, and BIW now offer a high deductible health plan. These changes have forced employees to become smarter consumers. They want to know the cost of tests and surgeries before obtaining them. Consumers want high-quality care. Quality outcome data is hard to find other than anecdotally, but employees expect it. Third, employees expect providers to use current technology and be efficient.
Well, employers in the greater midcoast area have a great interest in seeing that
quality, efficient, and affordable healthcare is accessible to all, and that the rising cost of health insurance stops. I support the necessary changes at Lincoln County healthcare and urge Lincoln County healthcare to continue to make additional changes that will meet the needs of our local employers, employees, families, and future generations. Thank you.
There's a gentleman holding a sign that's going to give you an indication of how much time you have left, and at that point, the microphone shuts off, in case you haven't noticed yet. And it's just a way to be fair and give everybody the same amount of time to be able to speak. Mr. Lathrop?
Hi. My name is Phil Lathrop, L-A-T-H-R-O-P, and I thought I'd offer a few comments of perspective and context this morning. As background, I was the chair at Miles Hospital in 2006, and I was a member of the joint committee between St. Andrews and Miles that looked at the combination and the value of moving forward together. I was also the first chair for three years of Lincoln County Health. I'm also a resident of New Harbor. I'm also a resident of New Harbor, and I am 13 miles away from the nearest hospital. There is no hospital, there is no ER, there is no urgent care center, there's not even a doctor down there. And I would remind everyone that something that seems to be lost in the conversation about beds and what can and should be done is that two larger cities in Lincoln County, namely Waldenboro and Wiscasset, don't have a hospital, don't have an emergency room, don't have an urgent care center. So what we're talking about here today is not revolutionary or unusual within the state of Maine, it's pretty common practice. Now, it's never easy to take services away, and I understand the heartfelt and sincere concerns of those who are speaking against the proposal today. But another thing that's been forgotten in all of this is that when we were working together as the joint committee between St. Andrews and Miles, the first recommendation, Plan A, was in fact to close Miles and to close St. Andrews, if you recall, and build a single new hospital on Route 1, which would be roughly the same distance from here as Miles is. There were no complaints that I can recall when that was proposed. Now, of course, we found out it cost $1 million a mile to lay pipe and sewage, and that, among other things, financially shot that in the foot, but that was the first option that we considered. I also want to speak to how these things happen. We did not reverse the process of cause and effect. We didn't close services and then watch demand go down. It was the other way around. Demand went down rapidly, and we had to respond. We tried our darndest. There was a chemotherapy service here for a number of years. It was operated by independent physicians from another community. They said there's not enough business. We begged them, we offered them incentives to stay, but it didn't happen. Finally, as a trustee, I want to tell you, you have two responsibilities in a hospital, fiduciary, and the other is clinical quality. And when a physician tells you he or she has quality concerns about services, you lose sleep at night. That's what this is about, is good healthcare, good quality healthcare at an affordable price.
Ian Weiss?
My name is Ian Weiss, I-A-N-W-E-I-S-S, and I'll bet you that I'm 20, I'll bet you $20 I'm the youngest one in the room here. I'm going to keep this short. About two years ago, day after Christmas, I got in a car accident and I wrecked my car. I was fine, luckily enough. I went to St. Andrews, I called my parents, I got an X-ray, I was fine. They drove me four miles home. If this happened today, instead of when St. Andrews was open, I would have been driven, what is it, 20 miles to Miles? Depending on who you ask, I would have been driven quite some ways on the icy roads that had already taken one car. I would have had to call my parents, they would have had to drive 20 miles there and back on roads that had already taken my car. And if we don't have an emergency room, something like this happens, I think that it is very likely that another accident will occur, just getting someone home from Miles. They talk about 80% of people who don't need ER services. I am very lucky that I did not break my back and need an emergency room. But on the other hand, I would not have wanted to drive back on a night like that. If it hadn't been for the fact that my parents live here, I would have been stranded at Miles until I could have called someone for a ride home or paid about $100 for a taxi if they were even open. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Olivia Dinsmore?
My name is Olivia Dinsmore, D-I-N-S-M-O-R-E. I wanted to address you today to let you know how the loss of St. Andrews has affected my husband and myself. When we made the decision to retire here 16 years ago, a big deciding factor was St. Andrews Hospital in St. Andrews Village. We received a letter from Liz Hall, Marketing Director at St. Andrews Village, inviting us to consider securing a place on the priority list. Liz stated, and I quote, "We take pride in our affiliation with St. Andrews Hospital and Healthcare Center, sponsor of St. Andrews Village Retirement Community. For residents of St. Andrews Village, our association with the hospital means access to the highest quality healthcare in a familiar and personal setting. With the loss of the emergency room and inpatient care, we have removed our name from the priority list, as we have no intention of moving to a facility when there is no hospital on the peninsula. We will have to move from an area that we love, which will result in a loss of our tax dollars to the community and the state of Maine. I hope that state officials will realize the impact of allowing Maine Health to close this hospital and merge with Miles. The governor states that Maine is open for business, but businesses will not locate here if consumers are leaving due to a lack of local healthcare. In the future, I sincerely hope that you will have these public hearings prior to the closing of a hospital. Perhaps we would have had a different outcome. In closing, I'd like to say something to the Lincoln County Health Board of Trustees who made this decision. We will never forget or forgive what you have done."
I apologize for messing up your name.
Hello. My name is Constance Machon, M-A-C-H-O-N, and I'm from Booth Bay Harbor. My mother-in-law is almost 97. So far, she has been able to live at home, take care of her own basic needs, and get out nearly every day with our help. Last winter, she spent 10 days at St. Andrews Hospital with the flu, and that was very good to have her right across the harbor. The district nurse comes once a week to discuss her meds and check her blood pressure. If she became disabled, we would certainly need a skilled bed for her. There are many in the community who have this need, so please consider giving us more beds for this peninsula, more skilled beds for this peninsula. Help us heal at home.
Thank you. Stephanie Wiley?
My name is Stephanie Wiley, W-I-L-E-Y. I am a resident of Booth Bay. I am here to represent my sister-in-law, Libby Hodgston, with her permission, who is now in the hospital. On November 18th, Libby went to Lewiston for an operation. The next day, she was to be placed into rehab. Lewiston had no rehab beds, but she wanted to come home. But with St. Andrews closed and no rehab available, she asked to go to Miles. Miles had no beds available. Lewiston kept her an extra day or two, being told that a bed may open up. A bed did not become available to her. With no openings, Brunswick was called, no luck. They did find a rehab in Bath, she was there for two weeks. Because of complications, Libby was transported to a hospital in Brunswick. From there, she went back to Lewiston. Libby's family consists of two daughters, one in Massachusetts, the other daughter and family in Booth Bay. Myself, two brothers, and our families also reside in Booth Bay. This has been a real hardship on Libby. It's not just the cost of being transported multiple times by ambulance. The biggest toll on Libby and our families is emotional, her being so far from home. If there was still a rehab at St. Andrews, we would have been able to pop in and visit off and on during the day to keep her spirits up. Now, we see Libby once a week, weather permitting, which is an hour and a half ride away. This is just one person, but has an impact on Libby and all our families who live here on the peninsula. Please consider having some beds opened up. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Jamison? Just as a technical note, it's much easier to hear you when the microphone's probably near your chin, so if you hold it up a little bit, when you get your chance, it works a lot better.
My name is Shirley Jamison. I live at 145 Emory Lane, Booth Bay Harbor. I have experienced some problems since the closing of St. Andrews Hospital and the emergency room. In November, I had an appointment at Penn Bay. Dr. Gramm has called in prescriptions to Rite Aid in Booth Bay Harbor and ordered a chest X-ray and lab work, which were called into St. Andrews. The prescriptions were filled and ready for me when we arrived back in the harbor the same day. The next day, I went to St. Andrews, and there was no record of the order for the chest X-ray and lab work. Luckily, I did have a copy of the orders with me, and so I was able to get it done. In addition, I volunteer at Gregory Wing, the nursing home, each Friday. Toward the end of November, I was told that I could no longer volunteer at Gregory Wing unless I had a flu shot. I had received a flu shot at the clinic held at the Family Care Center on October 17th, but again, through lack of communications, there was no record. This caused several phone calls about my need for a flu shot, until Barbara at the village was able to intervene and get it straightened out. I feel that these experiences have shaken my confidence in the system due to problems with communication and record-keeping responsibilities. Thank you.
Howard Wright?
Howard Wright, Sr., W-R-I-G-H-T. First of all, I want to thank you for coming down here, sir, and you got to experience our lovely Route 27 from Route 1 down to the harbor here, which the DOT has classified as one of the more dangerous roads. It was closed the 1st of December for 45 minutes during the daytime. Think what that would have done to an ambulance. Of course, I'm only 84 and 1/2 tomorrow, and you got, what, about 45 minutes, is that right, doctor, for... that right, doctor, for a stroke or something to get to the hospital? So sitting there on 27 doesn't look too appealing. Anyway, I'm here basically to let the committee know who I am because I'm writing an epistle that I can't say in three minutes. I do wear or have worn several hats at St. Andrews. I probably have a year on Jeff over there. He joined the board in '90. In '97, I believe, I came on for my stint in '96. So without being too facetious, I also know where some of the skeletons are. The board back then was very much a community board. It's not the type of board that is a three-in-one board that we have today. And I think at last count, there's at least a third of the board members that are Lincoln County Health or Maine Health employees, and you certainly don't bite the hand that feeds you. So whether there's any conflict of interest or not is to be determined. Another hat I wore was I was the first clinical mental health clinician on staff, allied health staff. When I first started, I still directed the counseling center that I had at the University of Maine and would commute back and forth. Now, my third hat, and chronologically speaking, I probably am one of the older corporators of Maine Health. And I must say, I'm very, well, extremely disappointed in the way Maine Health, Lincoln County Health, has, to me, really walked away from us here in Booth Bay Harbor, say what they will. And of course, there is a healthcare bulletin that came out that we have retained 94 percent, get that now, 94% of the services. And Lincoln County has only 6%, a measly 6%. But when you look at that measly 6%, it's the very heart, the very soul of St. Andrews Hospital, the emergency room, the beds. I can't say for certain, but I think it's great that Miles got such a distinction in their hospital standing, but I also feel it's on the back of St. Andrews. This hasn't been done like one of these quick bombs. It's been done very skillfully, in a stealth-like manner. It has not been open, transparent, because this community is the type of community that will get back and help if they know what the problem is, and that was never, ever discussed. So, without further ado, I think I'd better sign off and get ready to write my paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Jamison.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dan Jamison. I live at St. Andrews Village here in Booth Bay Harbor. My wife Shirley has recounted some problems experienced by us since the closing of St. Andrews Hospital and its emergency room. While I realize these problems to be of a nuisance variety, they point to deeper concerns, mainly the lack of adequate internal communication and the questionable ability of Lincoln County Health to manage this monster they have created. My presentation addresses major concerns that this merger creates. My first concern is with the lack of beds. Since Lincoln County Health acquired St. Andrews critical access status for the economic benefits gained, it became necessary to reduce the number of beds from 63 to 25 for the whole of Lincoln County. We need more swing beds, providing skilled nursing, recuperation, et cetera. Gregory Wing at the village is full, and Cove's Edge in Damascotta is a zoo with corridors crammed full of patients. Since last spring, we have been told that Gregory Wing was to be expanded, providing 15 to 20 additional skilled nursing beds, but nothing is happening. When questioned about the status, the standard answer is, "We're crunching numbers." This gives us the message that Lincoln County Health is more concerned with the bottom line than with patient care. Meanwhile, patients requiring recuperation and/or rehabilitation are being farmed out elsewhere rather than receiving local accommodation. I'm also concerned over the added burden and costs involving the Booth Bay Region Ambulance Service. With the closing of the ER, ambulances must now travel an extra 35 to 40 minutes when travel conditions are good, seeking medical care off the peninsula, traveling over Route 27, which is the only two-lane road available to ambulances. We've had to acquire an additional ambulance and train additional crews at a considerable cost, an inconvenience to the patient and the region's taxpayers. My last concern involves the morale of professional providers at both the Family Care Center as well as the Urgent Care Center. With the closing of the hospital and the ER, ambulances can no longer deliver patients to the facility. ER professionals feel their skills underutilized, for the most part, without the challenge involved in the treatment of trauma victims. I suggest that a possible remedy to many of these concerns is to reopen the ER on a 24/7 basis, provide an adequate number of skilled nursing beds, and establish a local management structure chosen by the community and responsive to it. Thank you.
Helen Farnham.
My name is Helen L. Farnham, F-A-R-N-H-A-M. I say Helen L. because there's another Helen Farnham. I have a letter. I have a letter that I am to read from a person, and I'll try to read it as quickly as possible because I would like to say two sentences after this. Several years ago, this is from Jane Larson. Several years ago, after surgery on my ear, performed in Freeport, the left side of my face opposite the ear being operated on began to swell up and left eye swollen shut. My daughter and her kids had just arrived for a four-day visit from California. When she saw my face, she insisted on taking me to St. Andrews Hospital. I said, "Don't bother," but she insisted. "It's Sunday, and they must treat you in the ER." First thing they wanted, of course, were insurance cards. God help them if they should work on someone without insurance. Then they said I would have to go to Miles Hospital in Damascotta, and they had sent for an ambulance to take me there. Here we are, here we were, two able-bodied women with our own transportation. Why would we ever need an ambulance? $700 charge. Oh, shame on them. We drove over to Miles. They said it would take three days in hospital to clear up the infection. No way. I said they could have me overnight, and I would leave in the morning so I could spend time with my daughter and her grandkids. They gave me continuous IVs overnight, and I checked out in the morning. Healed up nicely. Here's her question. Why couldn't St. Andrews have done the same? My comment is, I got a, I received a call from Miles saying, "I've got a doctor's referral for you." And I said, "Doctor's referral? I don't have a doctor up there." Who was it? I had no idea. I didn't even know the doctor's name. I said, "Did anybody bother to look at paperwork or your computer? It's got to be there." She had somebody else's record and called me. Was trying to give, you know, give me that patient's info. That's very careless for a hospital, very. I worked at St. Andrews for 10 years, main medical for 10 years, and also down here at St. Andrews, and I'm a chartered member of the ambulance service. That's careless. The other last thing is, my mother is going to be 90 this coming August. She's been wanting to come down here and visit me. She likes it down here. But the minute she heard we've lost our hospital, mama won't come. She's, she does have O2, she has medical problems and issues, because I don't want her sent up to Damascotta. She, nine times out of 10, would have to have an ambulance take her back down to Portland, and she lives in Westbrook. And that's a shame that my mother won't come up and visit because we don't have a hospital. And I thank Lincoln County Health for that.
Christopher Haskell.
Hi, my name is Christopher Haskell, H-A-S-K-E-L-L, and I'll be reading testimony on behalf of Charlotte Gowen, G-O-W-E-N. Charlotte is homebound and not being able to attend today. She doesn't want to leave her home in the winter because of fear of falling on the ice, but she has asked us to convey her story. "In August 2013, I fell and was hurt. I called 911, and the ambulance took me directly to St. Andrews ER, where they diagnosed me, and I, and they said I needed to be hospitalized, and they couldn't admit me at St. Andrews. So I had to wait six hours in the emergency ER before being transported to Miles. The reason was even then, back in August, there was no beds available at Miles. Finally, six hours after waiting in the ER, they found a bed for me in the Miles ICU. So then I spent at least two nights in the ICU beds at Miles instead of being admitted to St. Andrews down the street from where I live. Thank you."
Gerald Homer.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this proceeding to Booth Bay Harbor. My name is Gerald Homer. I've been a resident of Booth Bay since November 2005, and I've owned property here for 20 years. I am a retired hospital administrator, and I have been recognized by my peers as a fellow in the American College of Healthcare Executives. I was educated in part at public expense under provision of the same law that it mandates this public hearing. My obligation in accepting that assistance was and remains to use my best effort to advance the public health status and to help meet the public's need for comprehensive health service. The actual rationale for this plan has been a moving target. Initially, it was quality of care, while then it became cost. The Certificate of Need Board is responsible to determine whether or not this change is meeting the community's need. Lincoln County Healthcare expressed surprise at the additional cost of ambulance service resulting from the merger and change of service. If management was not aware of the transportation cost that would be shifted onto patients in the municipality as a result of this reorganization, in my opinion, they are incompetent. For them to say that they did not anticipate the shift of those costs, as well as the increase in cost from more frequent ambulance transfers due to the reorganization, is, in my opinion, simply not credible. And if not credible, I believe dishonest. I believe that the Urgent Care Center at St. Andrews campus is subject to the so-called MTALA regulations. Lincoln County Healthcare will argue that it is not. In their public relations campaign leading up to and since the closure of St. Andrews, they have carefully instructed us about the appropriate use of an urgent care center. That publicity has a subtle self-serving purpose. I understand that the MTALA rules, if a patient arrives at a hospital-owned urgent care center away from the main campus in need of emergency medical treatment, the hospital is responsible to stabilize and arrange for transport of the patient to an appropriate emergency treatment facility. By discouraging us to seek emergency care at their urgent care center, I believe they are trying to avoid their responsibility and the cost of those transfers. In addition to requiring the applicant to establish skilled beds in the Booth Bay Harbor area, I urge the CON Board to require, as a condition of your after-the-fact approval of this reorganization, to require Lincoln Health to bear the cost of the longer and more frequent ambulance transfers, which they seek to avoid and shift onto the taxpayers. One of the first criteria you must consider is access. And I took...
And as a follow-up, of course, we're taking written comments, so anybody has more to say, they're more than welcome to write it down and send it in. Peggy Powers.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carter. Would you please repeat what you just said about...
Sure. If you feel like you don't have enough time, I know when I speak, I frequently forget what I'm trying to say, and I'd like the second opportunity to write it out more how I felt about the whole thing. And so we are taking any comments, and we'll add them together in our consideration. So if you feel like you forgot something, don't worry, you can fill in in writing and send it in, and it's going to work just the same way. Okay? Thank you.